Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Wakefield School Committee of September 13, 2016. I'll call this meeting to order and welcome everyone. And read the mission statement for the Wakefield Public Schools. The mission of the Wakefield Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students to be lifelong learners who are meaningful contributors to society and meet their academic, social, civic, and physical potential. We have a public comment period and want to ask if there are members of the public who wish to address the committee on matters that are before, on the agenda, or matters outside the agenda. So. Let's see, we have Rick McKenna, welcome.
I was just hoping that when all the members arrived that if we could possibly have another vote on the resolution to either be for or against the question two vote. I believe it's really, really important for public education. Wakefield at this point in time loses about a half a million dollars and the vote, this question is not about eliminating charter schools, it's really about keeping the cap where it's at. And in that case, we would help Wakefield to maintain that $500,000 and not lose more money to the charter schools. So I think it's really, really important. And I know all the members weren't here last time and I know they're not all here at this point in time. So when, when we have a full board, I would like to ask if you might have another vote on that resolution.
All right, thank you, Rick. Okay, anyone else from the public who wants to comment tonight? Student Advisory Council, welcome back.
Thank you.
A new school year.
Yes, very exciting.
You want to reintroduce yourself?
Yeah, so my name is Bridgette Scanlon and I'm now a senior at the high school. I'm the only reporter or student that could come tonight, but this year, a little bit different, we're going to have six student representatives. So how we're going to do it is we're going to be in teams of two and we're going to, throughout the time period in between each meeting, we're going to report on extracurriculars, academics, and community and social events. And then one person from each team will come and report on what's going on in the school and whatnot. But in other news, we have our Alice training on Thursday and then we have a half day Friday and the block order is C-A-B at the high school. Also Thursday, we have parent-teacher, parent-teacher night, not conferences yet. And the first football game is Friday night at seven o'clock at Landergan. And fall sports are in full swing now. This week and last week were the first weeks for games and meets, but now they're in full swing and hopefully, hoping to have a very successful season.
Excellent. All right, well, we're glad to have you back and look forward to seeing your fellow students as you rotate in and give us updates on, on the goings on. Any questions, thoughts of our student council member?
Thank you.
All right, thanks again.
Easy night, boys.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda.
Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the August 23, 2016 meeting as presented.
Second. The motion's been made and seconded. Any questions, comments on the minutes? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Move that the school committee accept the minutes of the August 23, 2016 School Committee Policy Subcommittee Meeting as presented.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions, comments on those minutes? No? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Move that the school committee accept the minutes of the August 26, 2016 School Committee Budget Subcommittee Meeting as presented.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments, questions? No? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous?
Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the August 25, 2015 meeting as presented.
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. And could you remind us why we had to go back to this, these minutes?
We had no clerk at the time and Judy was still trying to catch up on the minutes.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, when I, because when I looked at it and I saw 2015, I thought it was a typo and then I assumed we just hadn't approved them yet. So we're catching up. Great. Any other questions on this? All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, thank you. Okay, chairman's comments. Had a couple of things. So I finished the agenda for the retreat and Judy is going to kindly post that tomorrow morning. So you guys will all get the agenda. Looking forward to, we've got a good, a good program, a good day, and very much looking forward to it. RJ, I have your summer, your summer reading a little late, but here it is. And anyone else who doesn't have theirs? It's a good, it's, it's good. It's a good piece for you and some of the things that are in that booklet, it'll be things we'll talk about on Saturday. So I realized I hadn't, I'd been able to talk about the opening of school, which Dr. Smith was kind enough to invite me to on September 1st. And it was a real pleasure and a real privilege to be part of the first day of school with the, with the educators and the Wakefield Public School system and very inspiring, very inspiring day. Rick was among the speakers. Celebration of veteran educators, tremendous student performance. Dr. Smith's comments, which she'll be sharing today on the core, her core values and the vision for the, for the district. It was really inspiring and I think as Dr. Smith runs through her presentation tonight, I think you'll agree. And finally, in my comments, I wanted to mention that this is National Arts and Education Week. And because, I'm going to read from the editorial, the Wakefield item of Wednesday, September 7th. The lead editorial said, "A well-rounded education should include the arts. They are extremely popular here in Wakefield, always have been and always will be." And so I wanted to, it's a great editorial and I know that as a music educator, Dr. Smith very much values the role of the arts in education. It's a time when, it's a week when we can celebrate that and all the great benefits that children derive from learning in and through the arts. So with that, I will move it on to the superintendent's remarks.
Okay, thank you very much. Yesterday, I was at the Greenwood School doing a learning walk and I saw a beautiful bulletin board about Arts Education Week and the students all had put Post-it notes about what arts education meant to them. And I was sharing a few of them with, with Mr. Leakis right before this meeting and the students wrote some really beautiful things about allowing, you know, their mind to kind of just flow freely or to be able to be creative or kind of restful practice or just that they love to use paint or whatever it might be. So it was really, really nice to see that. So happy Arts Education Week to all. So this evening, I'm going to inform the committee about the core values, vision and strategy for the 2016-17 school year. If you recall, a year ago, all of you who were here, we did a session on core values to open school last year and, and this committee participated in such a meaningful way by jotting down on your own sticky notes, you know, kind of what brought you to the school committee, kind of your purpose, you know, thinking around it. And it was really a great conversation. That was really a kickoff of a year-long process. So I'm going to report back on that process now. So as a quick reminder, you know, when I define what core values are, I always define core values as two things, as clarity of purpose and culture of practice. So the clarity of purpose, you know, why are we here in the Wakefield Public Schools? And then the culture of our practices, how we act, how we behave, how we engage in relationships and with one another. And that's the, kind of the core definition of what our values are about. And when you develop and live core values, you do that as an individual, as a, you know, professionally and personally. So every educator in the system, every child, every parent, every school committee member. We also develop core values as schools and that, you know, is a very contextual thing. I think sometimes, you know, from school to school, your own little community and so it's important for people to be able to articulate what they share and what's important to them. And then my belief is that we should also have core values as a school district. So what is the, the kind of overarching piece that tie us all together? So over the course of last school year, I set out to discover what the shared values are of the Wakefield community and to really understand better what our community wants most from their schools and what we want most for our students. So over the course of the year, I met with three constituent groups. I met with the faculty at every school and basically asked them just one simple question and they knew that question before I arrived. You know, what does your school stand for? It's a very powerful question and, and the faculty, you know, talked about that. I went around the district and spoke with student, students in forums all across the district and asked the students, what is it that you want most from your school? Again, a very powerful question, you know, by the time you leave this school, what is it that you want to get out of it? What do you want your school to be like? And we had some, I had some incredible conversations with kids. And then I spoke with parents at every school. The PTOs all helped me set up meetings and invited parents to come in. And I asked the question, what is the one thing you want most for your child in your school? And again, that's a really powerful question because I did say to them, what's the one thing? Not two things, not three things, but the one thing. If you were to say, what is the one thing you want most from your school? You know, and I think, you know, many of you are parents, many of you have had the experience of having a child in school and that's an important question. And so the parents were extremely thoughtful about it, really took their time to think about what that one thing would be. So in the end, it was my hope that I would really understand the community's most deeply held values that would guide our practice and also the culture of our schools. I was really looking for what I would call the nexus of our school's core values because each school had worked on developing the school, their school's core values during the year. And what I was looking for at the district level was just a very simple and clear and overarching focus for the entirety of the district. One thing I believe in very strongly is if you can't remember it, if you can't say it, it's hard to live it, you know? So it, I wanted it to be something very simple. So I was really looking for how, where those connecting points were in all of those many conversations. I had a notebook filled with comments and thoughts that people had shared with me. And then finally, you know, when you really start listening to people's core values, it's actually incredibly easy, easy to articulate the vision at the end because it really emerges from that work. So what kind of a place, you know, the students said they wanted their place to be. So the elementary students said the most common themes were happy, friendly, kind, and caring. And, you know, we talked about learning, we talked about the way, you know, people treat one another, we talked about the atmosphere of the culture of their school, and those were the most common themes that kept coming up. At the middle school level, the students talked a lot about wanting their school to be a place that's respectful, that's welcoming, and that's kind. And one student said the quote, "We really want it to be a place that we, we can be safe to be ourselves." And I thought that that quote really captured what a lot of the kids were trying to say. And I thought it was a wonderful quote that really captured what they, they thought about their learning experiences and what they thought about the relationships and the atmosphere of their school, what they really wanted and were hoping for and what really was important to them. At the high school, I had a long and wonderful conversation with a group of leaders and I captured two quotes in this PowerPoint that I thought really described the essence of what they were trying to say after an over long, an hour-long conversation. One student just simply said, you know, "It's my hope that we are cared for, that we're cared for." And I just thought, wow, that is like really, really powerful when you look through the lens of learning and growing academically, to really be cared for deeply, but also as a human being to be cared for. And I thought that was really captured what high school kids were trying to say. And then another student said, you know, "We just, we really want to become confident people and confident learners. If we can walk out of our school and feel confident as a person and confident as a student, you know, I think that's what we really want." And again, a great quote that really captured the essence of that conversation. So that's what our kids said. And then what the teachers said, I thought the teachers really just did a beautiful job articulating this across the district, it went from school to school, but the most common themes are the four that you, you see here. The teachers want to inspire their students' love of learning. They want to deliver excellent instruction and they want to deliver rich learning experiences. They want to support students' growth in a myriad of ways, academically, socially, emotionally, they just want, they want to help their kids grow. And they want to make sure that their environment in their schools is a place that's safe, respectful, and caring. And I just thought those, those were the most common words and ideas that, that kept emerging throughout the conversations. I told the faculty the other day a little story about when I was out talking to teachers about this, I, I had actually accidentally went to the Doyle School when I was supposed to go to the Walton School. I don't know how I did that, but on my calendar it was, and it's actually, if you know me, that's really unlike me. I'm not one to, you know, to make that kind of an error, you know, I'm usually very, very organized. But anyway, I showed up at the Doyle Early Childhood Center and the faculty clearly was surprised when I walked in the door with my assistant superintendent. And, and so they, I said, oh, I guess I'm in the wrong place. And they said, yeah, you weren't really due to be here till, you know, two weeks from now or something. So they said, but no, stay, stay, we can talk about our core values now. We're working on it and we're, we're kind of engaged in that process. So the teachers started talking about their core values and the, one of the teachers that was talking actually started crying when she was talking about the core values. And she's obviously like, she's really emotional, talking about our students and what was important to her. And then she started trying, started crying, so, you know, another teacher started crying and another teacher. So before you know it, several teachers were really having this very emotional moment. So of course, they started crying, I started crying because I'm very empathetic. So I, you know, I had some tears in my eyes too, but I said, you know something? I stopped at that moment, I said, "If you feel this way, you know you're talking about your core values." Our core, our core values and our shared core values, it's a deeply personal and emotional thing. It means this is the, the deep love that you have for your students is right here out in the open right now. And I also tell people, when you're talking about your core values, you also know if a core value of yours has been violated because you feel a sense of outrage. It's a very strong feeling when, when, when that, when your core value is violated. So that's kind of when you know it's a very, very deeply held belief and at the foundation of all of your beliefs. So anyway, so, you know, then I ran to the Walton because they were, I was late for them, but they, they came in, they had a great conversation with them. And then across every school to listen to our teachers talk about their students was one of the, the great experiences that I had all of last school year. And then I had these terrific meetings with the parents. Like I said, when I asked parents what they wanted most for their children, there was just some really incredible conversations. But the, the four themes that came out loud and clear across the district and again, kind of going through all my notes, those, the same words, the same phrases just coming, kept coming up. One was that they want their child to just develop a love for learning. I thought one parent expressed it very well. It was a middle school parent just said, you know, "If my child gets up every morning and is excited to go to school, then I know it's all good." You know, "I know that that means that when they get to school, they're, they're happy, they're excited about learning, they're going to learn because they're excited and they're open. It means that probably their relationships are going well with their teachers and fellow students. So I just want my child to be really excited about school. And if that is happening, then the rest of it's probably taken care of." But it was interesting because parents didn't really talk about math or science or social studies or any particular aspect of learning or content or curriculum. They talked about learning itself, that they wanted their child to just really develop a love that would really last throughout their life and they, they felt that their kids would engage in learning if they, if they loved it. Parents talked a lot about confidence. They talked a lot about confidence in, from the youngest children to the oldest children. They want their kids to be, you know, feel confident about their ability to learn and they want their, their child to feel confident as a, as a human being, as they kind of, as they, you know, work their way through school and, and into the world after school. That was a really, really common theme. They want their children to be respected, treated with respect, belonging, and care. Those were the, kind of the big three from parents. And they meant, you know, student to student, students with teachers, you know, kind of in all aspects of their, their life. And that, it was academically and it was socially. And they want their kids to be safe and happy. And one of the things that really struck me in all of this is, you know, if you go back and look at what the kids said and what the teachers said and what the parents said, they really all said a lot of the same things. I mean, it was almost like hearing the elementary, what the elementary students said was, you know, they wanted to be safe and happy. That's what the parents said too, you know? So a lot of really great common themes. So kind of getting back to the big two, clarity of purpose and culture of practice, after really kind of, you know, putting all of that together and synthesizing all of this information, it, I, I thought it became pretty clear to me that if I had to say what I thought the clarity of purpose was, that what we share in this community of Wakefield is that our wish and desire for the Wakefield Public Schools is to inspire the love of learning. And when I, when I kind of landed on that, I, I thought to myself as an educator, as the superintendent of schools, I mean, what better than that? Is there anything better? Because if that happens, then everything else will happen, all of the things will happen if, if children are inspired to love learning. So I thought that was a pretty amazing clarity of purpose. And then in regard to a culture of practice, I think that the two words that get to it all are respectful and caring. And when I think about the respectful and caring in the culture of practice and on a daily basis, the actions and behaviors of people, we're talking about both academically and we're talking about personally and socially. So, you know, that, that deep respect and caring around learning and around students' abilities, I mean, the one thing that I've always said and will continue to say, that all children will rise to the level of expectation. So having a great deal and a deep respect for all of our students and all of our students' ability and being respectful of our, our students as learners and being respectful of them as human beings and, and just a, a deep caring, both in our practice of, of teaching and, and, and how we care for our children that come to us every day. So then I just went back and said, you know what? If, if we only can choose so many words, and really there are one, two, three, four, five words, inspire, love, learning, respectful, and caring, if you're going to pick five words to talk about the Wakefield Public Schools, they'd better be really good words. So I went back and I went through my notes and I created some word clouds based on those five words. So the word inspire, great word because when you think about inspiring or inspiration, you're talking about things like curiosity and wonder, you're talking about passion, you're talking about motivating and, and igniting something in students. It's about believing in students and students believing in themselves and it's about encouraging. So inspire is really, really terrific word. The word love, so one of the things that I really thought about when I, when I thought about the word love is that we don't say it enough. We don't use the word love enough. I'm not really sure why. People might be a little bit afraid of it, but we shouldn't be. We love our students, the faculty and staff, our colleagues, we love one another. We love our, our community, we love our town and we can't be shy about saying it because within the word love are a lot of other really, really important words. It's about giving and supporting and caring, it's about enjoying, it's about commitment, it's about passion. And again, thinking, when you think about inspiring love in terms of learning and, and students learning in school and academically, if kids love something, they'll learn it. You know how students are with something that they're really passionate about? They know it all, they memorize it all, you know, they're committed to it. So inspiring that love in, in different aspects of learning and then, and then in the way people live and treat one another. So that's probably the best of the best of the words. And then learning, of course, when we just, when we think about learning, we think about growth. If you notice, that's the biggest word in that word cloud because it was used the most often. I don't think about learning as achievement, I think about learning as growth. And I think you've heard me talk about that before, when we're talking about how we really, you know, measure what our, our students are doing. And it's all aspect of the whole child, from academics to life skills to their wellness to, to arts, to all aspect of, aspects of what students are engaging in, in schools. And then respectful, the respectful really is, is an umbrella term for a lot of really important things. One of the things I said the other day to the faculty and staff is, you know, respect can be somewhat of a surface deep word in regard to, we want our students to be respectful of their Chromebook, so we want our students to be respectful of their school and not, you know, drop trash on the floor. Well, of course, we want those things, but that's not really what we're talking about here. We, a student and a teacher can be respectful of one another by passing each other in the halls and saying, "Good morning, so-and-so, good morning, Mr. or Mrs. so-and-so." That's respectful, but we're really talking about something much greater and much deeper than that. Again, it has to do with believing in our students and their great capacity. It has to do with appreciating the differences in people. It has to do with really honoring the intrinsic value of individuals. It's a, you know, really embracing all kinds of people, not only, you know, teacher to student, but teacher to teacher, you know, adults and kids, parents, all of us together is really, that respect is a much deeper level than what might be on the surface. And I, and I think respect alone is never good enough unless it's paired with something like caring. And caring is a word that speaks of compassion, selflessness, generosity, support, thoughtful, considerate, understanding. And those are all, as we talk a lot about the social, emotional needs of our students, caring is at the, the center, a core of what we're talking about. So in the end, this is who we are in the Wakefield Public Schools. The voices of our community have said that what our clarity of purpose and the culture of our practice is. And that led to our vision. And like I said, at that point, I just thought the vision was super easy to write because it was basically the culmination of, of this work. And so I said, what, what did people say that they wanted from our graduates? By the time our students graduate from high school, it certainly would appear that both our students, our teachers and our, our parents are hoping that our Wakefield Public Schools graduates will be confident, lifelong learners, and that they become respectful and caring members of their community. That seemed to capture that vision in a, in a quick snapshot. So every good core value statement comes with a really cool logo, so we had to have one. So I, I commissioned, I called an art teacher at Wakefield Memorial High School, really, really talented teacher, her name is Morgan Gianati. And she teaches graphic design and visual arts and AP art. And, and I said, "I'm looking for a great logo that we can use to kind of use for the Wakefield Public Schools that'll capture our core values so that we keep our core values out there and living." And, and I said, you know, "Love to have a kind of, something abstract." I said, "Use abstracts." I said, "Use the Wakefield colors, which are red, gray, you know, and, and white." And so this is what she came up with and it is pretty beautiful. So while Wakefield Public Schools inspire the love of learning. And if you look at the symbol to the left to be able to kind of capture what that is, picture looking, an aerial view, you're looking down on three individuals who are collaborating together. Can you see it? You know, as if they have maybe their arms around each other, sort of a collaboration of a very respectful and caring group. And then she created a pretty cool W in the white space of that logo. Do you see it? So at first glance, you may or may not know what, how she came to that, but I really love it. It's simple, it's beautiful. And so we've already shared that logo out with everyone and, and I'm already beginning to, to see it in teachers' classrooms and we put it on the stationery, so I'm hoping the school committee likes it. If, if you don't like it, you might need to speak up and I'll, I'll... If you don't like it, you might need to speak up and I'll get back to work. But if you like it and you want to embrace it, I would love to kind of adopt that as a nice logo for the Wakefield Public Schools.
So, Kim, do we, before you move on to the next phase, do we want to take a pause here?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. Thoughts on the core values before we go to strategy?
Yeah, there's a lot there. So, reactions, Tom?
Shortly. I had the great opportunity to participate in the parent forum at the Galvin back, forget now, but certainly months, it lasts spring at some point.
Early spring, yeah.
Early spring. And first of all, true to form was really well done, very well facilitated. And one of the things that I was most, most interested to really compliment what Dr. Smith said earlier, was, was really the discussion that sparked. It wasn't about textbooks and curriculum. It wasn't about, it was about, you know, advancement and all of the achievements of the last couple of years and appreciative to the school district and all of that, but much more so about the culture of the building and, you know, what expectations there were. And confidence came out a lot to really, to really build. Now, you know, middle school kids, so therefore middle school parents have a vision of confidence anyways, but, but really the types of things that you're referring to really struck home with, with my wife and I as well as, well as the group of parents. And I think you've captured the sentiments incredibly well. And I think the types of things that, that if we get all of these, if we get our humanity right, the rest of it falls into place, you know? It's less about, you know, books than it is about, you know, loving, loving, caring, inspiring. It's some really, really, you know, great work in addition to all of the, there's not a lot of data, so there's no numbers, which is, which is something that I, I didn't fully appreciate until I saw the material the other day. And I said, "Oh, there's no numbers." This is the only thing we've gotten that has no numbers in it because it's not about numbers. It's not about facts and figures. It's about emotions and feelings and, and what we want for ourselves and what we want for our kids. And you've captured it incredibly well. So, thank you for, for that. And that had to be interesting.
That was fantastic.
Because it's not about, there's no, there's no data points. There's no measuring how we, how, there's no benchmarks we can, we can gauge to see how we're doing on, on, you know, on some of these things other than just staying in check with each other. And that's, that's really important. Thank you.
Chris, did you have some thoughts?
You know, one thing I thought was, if I had to pick the most interesting part, was the comment, it was in the middle school section, but I'm surprised it wasn't also in the high schools. It was, it was like, was the confidence, it was okay to be me, however they worded it. And to me, that, that just shows the transformation that has taken place over the years when, I can think back when schools, almost it felt like their goal was to make everybody conform rather than encourage them to be individuals. And I really admire that that's the way we've come, that conformity isn't the answer. It's teaching people to be comfortable in their own skin and how they can be productive members of society as themselves instead of having, trying to form, make them be somebody else. I really like that, that coming out in this process.
Rob?
Yeah. I think the best part about this is how organic it is. I think core values probably always should come from the bottom up and not the top down. So, I think too, I've had the conversations with all the stakeholders, definitely leads to a stronger reflection of who we are as a district and a community. And I think it's very, very indicative of who we are as, as, you know, people in Wakefield. So, I'm proud of it.
Excellent.
I'm very proud of it as well. I think that logo and slogan, I mean, plenty of other schools out there that just have sort of a default, kind of maybe boring logo and slogan, but that, that is awesome. And also, the vision really spoke to me as well, respectful and caring, two words that are very important to me. And I think if everyone kind of falls into play with that, the rest will follow. So, I love it.
Okay. One way. So, I'll throw in a couple of comments. So, I, maybe just to summarize in many ways, because I think my colleagues said it really well, but it seems to me that what you've hit on is, you know, there's, in a way, there are two kind of competing visions of, of the purpose of education. They're not, they're, they're not mutually exclusive, but one is about individual achievement, right? And a lot of, you know, in a sort of, in a high, you know, highly driven capitalist society, individual achievement is always going to be important. But the other vision of public education is about its civic purpose, right? Civic in the broadest sense, which is about how are we educating human beings to participate in a democracy, right? And to have agency, right, in that democracy? And you do that by developing them as fully formed human beings, right? So, I think what you've hit on, what you've, what you've captured, I think, and what has bubbled up is where I put it so well, you know, organically is that the core values of the district are, are the latter, right? That this district is really about building a community together and the schools are a vehicle to do that. So, I think it's really well done. And, but I did have one practical question, and this probably is because I'm a communications professional, and that is, how then do we begin to assure that the, that everyone is sort of comfortable using the language? It's in a way, it's sort of what corporation would call a brand campaign to make sure that everybody is, is living and talking the brand and in particular, the logo itself and how it's employed and our various, everything from the website to the letterhead and all of that. I'm sure you're thinking about that already, but maybe you could talk a little bit about that.
Sure. So, the first step after kind of, you know, listening to the community conversation and sort of my, you know, hearing it and being able to articulate it on behalf of the community is to, the initial communicating out. So, I talked to all of the faculty and staff in the Wakefield Public Schools on September 1st, did the same presentation for them. I invited out, I don't know if you saw my email to the parent community, but I invited parents to a couple of opportunities. One, to tune into this meeting tonight, then I'd be talking about it. And then on September 28th, I am invited an open PTO meeting to invite parents in to communicate out again, this, this presentation. And then I need to talk to principals about how to have the opportunity to see students to loop back around and communicate back around. So, first of all, the telling of what the values are. So, this is, this is what the community said. Then you have to go about living them. And it's not the kind of thing that you can just state and then step back from and hope or wish that it might actually happen, but you, but you really at that point have to hold ourselves accountable to live those values, to model those values, to be what we say we are. So, at the leadership retreat in August, we did what's called a strategic mapping activity, all of the district leaders, and sat down. And basically, what we did was we mapped out, you think about the actions and behaviors, and it's very, very specific, the actions and behaviors of people. It's not about what people say. It's not about a dialogue. It's the actions and behaviors of people. The actions and behaviors of people in our schools, so from, you know, the adults to the students, you know, and how those, the core values begin to live and breathe in the school and how the leadership in each school can help those come alive. I'm a big believer in positive reinforcement. I said to leaders, you know, "One easy way to do it is if you see it, praise it." You know, with, with students, if you see it, praise it. If you see them modeling that behavior or acting in that behavior, you know, very explicitly link it to your core values and praise that behavior and give positive reinforcement. Talk about it, you know, when principals and assistant principals are out in classrooms and you go into a classroom where, I can think of an example, towards the end of last year, I was in a social studies classroom at Wakefield Memorial High School. There are actually two teachers that chair that room. And one teacher was finishing up 10 minutes of a lesson and I caught the next teacher teaching the first minute, 10 minutes of a lesson. And both, what really struck me is that the, the atmosphere or the environment of the room was incredibly, I would say respectful and caring, would really hit the nail on the head. I mean, the relationships, everyone knew each other really well, just, you know, great dialogue, great commitment, great passion to what was going on in the room, and some really excellent instruction was going on. So, I took that opportunity as the superintendent to very quickly after that, shoot both teachers a quick email and said, and copy the principal, of course, and said, you know, you know, "Thank you for having me in my class, in your classroom," and very explicitly noted the values that I saw alive in that room. You know, just in the actions and behaviors of people, this is what I saw. And as you reinforce, it keeps people thinking about it and it's a way of kind of helping those grow and live and continue. You might ask faculty a share at a meeting, what are some of the ways that you've seen the core values come alive? So, again, going back to the strategic mapping idea is leaders really thought through. We chunked out the year in thirds, you know, the fall, the winter, and the spring. What are some of the things we might do, ways that we will look to the actions and behaviors of people to keep the conversation alive, to keep us all thinking about it? And, and we all just worked on that and they shared their ideas and they had a lot of great ideas. They're planning to go back to their schools and with their instructional leadership teams at every school, then talk with those leadership teams and allow them to do that same activity. So, that you were, we're really talking a lot about distributing leadership, you know, how we get, you know, in every school, just a large group of leaders really doing and living the work. So, so I think, I hope that answers your question, but that's kind of how we'll try to keep that alive. In regard to the logo, I, you know, I wouldn't want to go too much further in making sure that you all liked it and were on board as the school committee. If you, if you like the logo as we have it, I think it's, our thought would be that we just, you know, use it as often as possible because if every time you look at, you know, your letterhead or your classroom door and it says, "Inspire the love of learning," it's, core values are something that you not only believe, they're also something you try to live up to all the time. Are we all perfect? No, of course not, you know, but, but it's, you're always kind of striving to live up to the values you espouse that you really want to live. So, I hope that answers your question.
Yes. Great. Any final thoughts, questions before Dr. Smith moves on to the instructional strategy?
I also, maybe we'd just like to share with the committee because Chris was there and Greg was there on opening day, but I do want to just let you know that I actually talked about the school committee. It actually just kind of came out as I was talking to the faculty and staff in the Wakefield Public Schools. I mentioned the school committee on a couple of occasions. I had thought about when we did the exercise a year ago and everyone wrote their core values on, on a sticky and then everyone, you know, chose to share them out. And I told the faculty and staff that I was really kind of choked up during that experience because I, you know, I told them how incredibly fortunate I believe we are in the Wakefield Public Schools, that it was just so apparent in that exercise that, that the seven members of this committee are just so committed to children and for the benefit of children and everybody's here for the same purpose. And I used it as an example to say, you know, we, you know, we as a committee at different times will disagree on issues, but that's why core values are so incredibly powerful because if that's what you share and we're all here for the same reasons. And I said to the faculty, you know, "When things get hard, and surely they will get hard, and it's not always easy, but when you share core values, it's like the rudder of the ship. It just kind of helps you make decisions and be purposeful." So, I shared that with the faculty and staff. So, I just thought you should know that and that I think we're incredibly fortunate in the Wakefield Public Schools, just the values that live here on this, on this committee. And then finally, I just want to say, I'm so proud, I mean, these core values, I didn't write them. The Wakefield, the Wakefield community wrote them. And that's what, I just listened and put them to print and I just, I'm incredibly proud to serve in this community because it is a really, really special place. So, that's the core values piece. So, then next, the instructional strategy. I talked about the core values first because the core values are the foundation. And when you look, if you, if you have your packets with you, if you look at the strategy, the core values are literally the foundation of the strategy and kind of almost hold that strategy up. And again, it's the rudder of the ship, if you will. So, I just want to point out a few other pieces of the strategy, kind of the way that it's evolved over the last couple of years. You might note that I put the vision at the top that I just articulated to you. And then next, I included a theory of action. So, in a theory of action, basically what we're saying is if we want to get to that vision, you're kind of creating an if-then statement. So, if we do these following things, then it is our hope we will be able to achieve that vision. So, from an instructional standpoint, the theory of action is articulated, if we provide students with a rich and challenging curriculum, so you can see that that's the rigorous curriculum objective or that first big bucket, that's the R. And we deliver it with high quality instructional practices. So, that's the second objective, quality teaching. And intentionally designed learning experiences that will meet the needs of all students, not some students, but all students. And that's the third objective, the individualized student learning. Then we hope that we will successfully prepare our children for college career and the next steps of community. And of course, those things coupled with the core values. So, so that kind of is what creates the three big objectives, quality teaching, rigorous curriculum, and individualized student learning. Quality teaching, I noted to the faculty, and I think this is a really important distinction, when I tell you that every word in this strategy is very intentional and very thoughtful, quality teaching among them, we're not saying quality teachers because we have quality teachers. We're talking about quality teaching, which is, we're talking about instructional practices, really looking at all of us growing every day, just improving our practice, striving for excellence, best practices in the field, research-based and, and learning and growing. So, under the quality teaching, there are three initiatives. And those of you who've been on the committee now for a few years, each year, these evolve a little bit. They're, they're, we're tweaking them, maybe sharpening the lens, if you will. We started three years ago, a kind of a bigger, more general way. And then now, as we're really working through our strategy, we're able to, to focus even further in each of them. The first one really hasn't changed a lot. We're still, I think it's incredibly important that every educator in the district is provided with quality, meaningful feedback on an ongoing basis, basis to foster continuous growth. That feedback, as a superintendent, I get feedback. I get feedback from my team, my assistant superintendent, my principals, but also I have a coach that gives me feedback all the time. So, I'm always learning and growing.
And your school committee.
And my school committee. And my school committee, most importantly of all. And, and our administrators get feedback from me, from Mr. Lyons and others. Our teachers get feedback from their administrators. But also, we've really invested in non-evaluative feedback too, that we've really tried to, to create a coaching model so that teachers are able to give each other feedback. Coaches are available with a high level of expertise and time built into their schedule to provide feedback to teachers so that there's a safe place for everyone to learn and grow. So, that's the first initiative. The second is one of the really important ones that we're just fine tuning and really trying to get off the ground in a meaningful way. And that's about job embedded professional learning. And so, and this will happen, we're hoping, through three different pieces. One is the professional learning communities, which you've heard us talk about. And PLCs are about teacher collaboration, teachers talking about their students' growth and thinking about what strategies, collaborating with each other around what strategies do I want to bring back to my classroom to try to accelerate or promote student growth and learning. The second is learning labs. And learning labs is about de-privatizing teacher practice. I told the teachers in September 1, my dream for the Wakefield Public Schools is that the classroom doors are open and teachers go into each other's classrooms and see each other teach and learn from each other and talk about teaching and de-privatizing our practice in a myriad of ways. So, that's what learning labs are about. And then finally, coaching. I already mentioned the fact that we've really invested in this district in coaches so that you have people that have that high level of expertise and the time to go and get the data, get the resources. You know, teachers should be busy teaching. These, these are people that give, that have the time to do a lot of that other work to support what teachers are doing. So, on number two, this is for teachers, by teachers, about teachers, learning. Number three, I know I've talked to you guys about this before, the five high leverage instructional practices. We've identified, you know, what we believe are the five highest leverage practices that all teachers, all educators, all administrators, we're all working on. And, and we believe- And we believe that these are those, those levers that can really push forward the excellence of our schools if we continue to work on these. Each school takes on one of them as it's the area of focus. You'll, you'll see those in the school improvement plans coming in October. The second objective is rigorous curriculum. You know, we're still, we continue to be committed to consistent, high-quality, standards-aligned curriculum. Now, we're doing this in all areas, but the focus for the purpose of this strategy is English language arts and math. And that continues to be a big push in the district and already, especially with the resources provided by the recent budgets, that this, you know, really has been a huge lift for the Wakefield Public Schools. One, one little side note I'll make there is it was great to be in an elementary school today. A year ago today, the elementary schools were grappling with a lot of brand-new curriculum at once. And the, you know, it's just a high level of just anxiety, you know, around so much to learn, so much to do. And our teachers just strive to be so professional for their children. And so, but one year later, it actually was fantastic to see how much more people, comfortable people were after having been through it one time through. So, just that in itself is just really great to see is just that comfort level, the expertise around this new curriculum. Number five, so this year, as we enter this year in the curriculum review cycle, we're really going to be studying the science, technology, and engineering standards that are new in the state of Massachusetts. And we'll be really doing a lot of research around the curriculum we currently use and what else is out there. And basically, the idea would be to make recommendations by May of 2017 for any, what the investments we want to make in science, technology, and engineering will be.
We have a new, a new staffer.
We do, grades five through 12. We have a new science curriculum coordinator.
Science curriculum coordinator, right.
So, which she will really aid us with that process along with Assistant Superintendent Doug Lyons. Number six is about digital learning. We continue to work on instructional technology. You'll notice the language has changed here a little bit. One is just referring to instructional technology as digital learning tools. And we're talking about both enriching and personalizing. That's probably the, the biggest difference now is when we think about personalizing the learning experience. So it's more than just individualizing, it's personalizing it. So we're thinking about students' strengths, students' needs, we're thinking about students' personalities, students, the things that they love and they're passionate about. So really personalizing the student learning experience and using digital learning tools to do that. And then finally, the third objective, the individualized student learning. You know, we've been working on this one. This one, it was probably the one that was the hardest to wrap our, our heads around the last few years, but I really feel like this year, we've got it. I think we've finally nailed down what we mean and what we aim to do. And you've seen some of the other graphics I've given you, the paired triangles about academic and social emotional learning and the three tiers of support. I've also shared with you kind of our definition, our shared definition of inclusive schools, what that means and what individualized learning means. But the two big initiatives we're working on this year is utilizing standard five to examine quantitative and qualitative student growth measures to really help us inform our practices and our decisions at the classroom level, at the school level, and at the district level. And then finally, number eight, and the final initiative, is to continue to work on and develop effective, inclusive practices and using effective tiered strategies to meet the, the needs of our students, both academically and socially and emotionally. And so we're doing a lot of work on tiered strategies right now, and I'm really excited about that work. We'll be talking a lot about that this year. So when we talked to the faculty, you know, I told them, I said, you know, sometimes it feels like there's a million things going on, but, but there really aren't a million. There are eight. There are really eight things that we're focused on and trying to be really clear about so that we're not zigzagging all over the place and taking on more than anyone can handle, but really being expressly focused on things that we think can really move our schools to the next level of excellence. And another fun little thing I'll just share with you is at our leadership retreat on the first day in August, I gave the district leaders a pop quiz. And I said, close your books, put everything away, you can't look at anything. And I gave them an opportunity to pair up, just so that they wouldn't be too anxiety-stricken. And I said to them, can you articulate our instructional strategy? Can you say it without looking at it? And so they all worked at it and I said, listen, I'm not, I'm not going to, you know, grade you on this, I just want you to give, give it a try. And basically, what, what, the point I was, was trying to make is that to lead it, to live it, you have to know it and you have to be able to say it. If you can't articulate it without looking at it, then you don't know it well enough to lead it. And, and so we really talked a lot about that. And then we also just really talked about it's important, as we really now, I think we're really delving into this, that we want our teachers to know it. So on September 6, I spent time going over it with the full, all of the teachers and instructional support staff, really to make sure they all understood it. And then principals are bringing it back to their school instructional leadership teams because this will live in the schools, really with the leadership of the schools, which, you know, a principal or assistant principal are just one or two people. The real leadership in the schools are really in our teaching staff. So one of the things that we thought it was important to add this year, which is the final piece, which is in italics, right below the objectives, and it reads, "We recognize the importance of instructional leadership teams at all levels of the system for their voice, ownership, and leadership, and the effective implementation and outcomes of the strategy." If Kim Smith is the only one that knows it, it's not going to happen, right? Everybody needs to know it, everybody needs to live it, everybody needs to be working with it. So the day that we're really are doing it is the day you can walk into any teacher's classroom in the district and say, hey, tell me what you're doing in the Wakefield Public Schools, and that they can actually talk about it. And that's, you know, that's when we know it'll, really kind of to the point of what you were asking before is that, you know, back in the old days, when you created a strategic action plan, often they were in a great big binder, there were many, many pages. And, and, you know, even with the best intentions. And I'm remembering the most recent one we did, that was big, was actually pretty good. It was really quite good, but it's, it's hard to know it. So the goal here is to get it on one piece of paper. And just.
And to integrate it into your work.
Yes. And for, to have focus and synergy, and it's all around what we refer to in education as the instructional core. You know, what are we teaching, how are we teaching it, and how are our students learning it? And that's really the, the three buckets that you see here. So I just have to tell you, I am so proud of this strategy, not, you know, me personally developing, because we all developed it together, you know, but I'm, I'm proud of what we're doing in the Wakefield Public Schools. This is really, really good work and exciting work. So, so that's it. That is what we are doing.
So maybe again, pause there and give members a chance to ask questions or comment on the instructional strategy as it's presented? Any thoughts? Okay, all right.
All right. That's it for me tonight. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Okay, moving on to budget items. We have our business reports.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening, Mike.
Welcome back after the first week of school. It's been an exciting, fun week. Excited to have all the smiling faces back around the building. It's nice to see the kids, so. The reports that I'm going to present tonight are not drastically different from what you saw two weeks ago. The reports I gave two weeks ago on August 22nd, the, I'm sorry, it wasn't, it was on August 26th, was our last meeting?
Yes.
The report data was from August 22nd, and the report data tonight's from August 31st. So it's about a nine-day difference. There were actually zero changes in the, in the salary lines because there was a nine-day period, we did not hit another payroll period within that time. So there's not a whole lot of information to share there. Contractor services, really, it's, it's gone about where we're, where we're getting our encumbrances done with transportation got encumbered after this last one, a little bit more in the special education area also. So there's not a whole lot to report in contractual services. Materials and supplies, again, it's a $20,000 difference. Most of our supply purchases for instructional purposes were done throughout the, the summer. So this is kind of the picking up some odds and ends that we hadn't, hadn't expended before. So, so that's really it on the, on the business reports. I don't know if there's any questions, I just didn't want to.
Questions?
Take up too much of the.
From members? Chris, did you have one?
As I recall, you're going to wait till after the contracts are ratified before you load any of that.
Before we encumber the salaries, yeah, correct. Once, once all the contracts are ratified by both, both the units and the school committee, we'll certainly, that'll be a big focus for us is to get that payroll data loaded into MUNIS and have everything encumbered. Nope, that's great. Yeah, because there really wasn't, there really wasn't much to report. Just wanted to point out in the revolving accounts, the athletics is a healthy balance, that's, that's nice to see. So for personnel, we have 25 new hires, and this is from July 1 through September 1. Those 25 new hires are all throughout the district. All but one of them is, was an open position through a resignation or retirement or a non-renewal. So only one of them was as a result of a new position that was in the budget for FY17. And then to go with that, we had 19 resignations or non-renewals and the seven retirements that we had previously recognized for the employees. So it's 25 up, 25 down. There's still a couple of holes to plug and places to fill, but we're in a pretty good position right now with the, with the hiring process.
Do you have a thought?
Yep. I just want to share with the committee that we have two new assistant principals on board this year. So the first move was Geraldine Traficante, who was an assistant principal at the Dollbear School, moved to Wakefield Memorial High School to fill Dennis O'Larry's spot, which opened a vacancy at the Dollbear School. Jason Wallace, who was our esteemed math coach across the district, received that job. So congratulations to Jason Wallace. He's the new assistant principal at the Dollbear School. So that was wonderful. Now we have a vacancy for a math coach. But some great news is that the, some interviews were happening this afternoon and Mr. Doug Lyons came in really smiling at the end of the interviews, which was good. I was hoping he didn't come out with a look of despair. And felt that we had, you know, he had a couple of very, very good candidates, so that's.
And one related point to note, I think this is true, but this is the first year in quite some time where we've, we haven't had any changes in the principals.
That is true.
Right?
That's true.
Which I think is worth noting because it's really important. Continuity in those positions is so important.
Agreed.
So that's worth noting as well.
Agreed. And then the, the other assistant principal was hired in August, mid-August, is Jenna Lee Coyne at the Galvin Middle School to replace Therese Charmuic. And she's off to a great start, I saw her today. So, so congratulations to our new assistant principals. I wanted to make sure I pointed those positions out.
Any questions on personnel? Chris, go ahead.
On the personnel report, one example is that Ms. Charmuic retired, but she's not on the list.
She officially, her official retirement date is October 5th or somewhere in that ballpark. So she hasn't officially retired yet. She's announced her retirement, but she hasn't officially retired yet.
Is she at the school?
She's within the district. She's, you know, so we need, we wanted to have Ms. Coyne generally on staff for the start of the school year. So we got creative in the way we did it, but we certainly, we got Ms. Coyne on for the first, first day of school. And Dr. Smith and Lynn O'Neill and Doug Lyons are using Therese in other areas that she's agreed to assist us in outside of the Galvin everyday activities.
So this report is through August 30?
Through August 31st, correct, yes.
Okay, I could just.
Actually, through September 1st, through the first day of school, September 1st.
I can think of a couple of names not there, but we'll, we'll talk about later.
Sure.
Just to really, you know, thank Therese Charmuic because she knows from her experience how hard it would have been to open the Galvin and have a new person try to walk in cold without being part of the district leadership and all of that. So, you know, so we, we did that overlap for just these first few weeks of school.
Oh, fine with that.
And just, and I know you're not questioning, I just, but I just wanted to let you know that one of the things that has come in really handy was that we are up this year for a coordinated program review for the, for the state, which involves a ton of paperwork. And so that's what Therese is doing. I'm not sure that's nearly as much fun as being the assistant principal, but that is what she's doing right now is working for Lynn O'Neill on the coordinated program review until our actual retirement date, a few weeks from now, so.
Okay. Moving on to payroll warrants, motion.
Move that the school committee approve payroll warrant number six and number eight as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous? And we have gifts to report. We start with the, should we read the motions?
Sure. Move that the school committee accept with gratitude a donation of $1,759 from the Wakefield Music Boosters for a stipend for the TRIAM Honor Society Advisor.
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous?
Move that the school committee accept with gratitude a donation of $1,000 from the Friends of WHS Field Hockey Booster Club. These funds are for an assistant coach for helping the WHS field hockey team during the season.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? It's unanimous?
Move that the school committee accept with gratitude a donation of $1,000 from the WHS Girls Soccer Booster Club. These funds are for an assistant coach for helping the WHS girls soccer team during the season.
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous?
Move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of a box of miscellaneous school supplies valued at $100 from a parent of a Wakefield Memorial High School student.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous?
Move that the school committee accept with gratitude a donation of $11,400 from the Friends of Wakefield Warrior Club Booster Club. The funds are for an assistant coach for helping the WHS football team during the season.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous?
Move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of a Grove Aquaponics System valued at $4,000 to be used in the WHS Science Department Biology and Gardening Club.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Our cup runneth over with generosity from our community. It really is impressive to see all these things, isn't it? It's wonderful. Thank you. All right, moving on to subcommittee reports. Budget, Chris.
You've got the minutes of our subcommittee meeting in your packet and we accepted them. So we did meet Friday after our last meeting, so it's like two weeks ago.
Yep.
The, the focus of our meeting was the facilities rates, the rental rates, and what's going to be, how they'll be used. We really wanted to get this up and updated on the website to be used for the current school year. So the, the rates were modestly revised, really. I, I don't see a big change in a way, they seem very reasonable to me. There are a couple of sections of it that people should be aware of, and I, I would like to see the facilities form on the website clarified a little bit more to explain what the, you know, beyond these rental rates, how, what the custodial fee is, we don't really say on, on the website. And the, you know, for some of the larger events where we need a house manager, you know, what that fee will be, and because these rates don't cover those things, because that will vary. I mean, if you're having a, a small little gathering and you want to use the auditorium, that's fine, and you have one mic and one set, little set on your lights, you have the auditorium fee plus the, the audio, the AV fee. But if you're doing something more elaborate like a show or a recital for the, for the local dance studio or whatever, their, their needs are much more complex and, and those fees will clearly expand to meet the, so we have the correct number of personnel on, on site to make sure that our, our facilities are protected and maintained and we do have the ability to continue to maintain them properly by, because all these rentals do cause wear and tear on our, our facility as well. We're just trying to maintain and do our best to have the funds to do proper maintenance.
And so just to revisit the process, so the budget subcommittee voted to recommend the new rate structure. They were put, the new rate structure was put on the table at our last meeting. So we're being asked tonight to vote on that. So maybe we start with the motion.
Sure. Move that the school committee approve the facilities rental rates as presented.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Questions? Comments? The rates, Tom?
Thank you. My question really isn't about, you know, appendix A that's in front of us. My question, I guess in the form of a, of a supporting statement for some of the things that Chris mentioned earlier about the need to really clarify what other charges are behind some of these things. Like, for example, I would like to have a clearer understanding and maybe share around the table and share with the community what we are charging for community groups to rent our facilities. What are we charging, you know, to rent the, either Gym in the Galvin, to the WBA, or the youth soccer, or Wakefield lacrosse? There are lots of these are the types of questions that we get. You know, much more so than what is the cost per hour for a for-profit group. Those aren't things that people talk about, but, you know, how it impacts the costs and the fees that, you know, Wakefield parents are paying a couple of places. So I'd like to have that conversation, and whether it's be more transparent by being on the website or something that ultimately comes back to this group and we get an appreciation for that. I'm all in favor of these rates make perfect sense to me, just I appreciate they're modestly adjusted. But that conversation to me is more, frankly, more important than this one.
Yep. So maybe something like a Q and A, you know, frequently asked questions about the rate structure, presenting those kinds of things in an accessible way to parents.
And I may go even so far as to say that we should have a larger structured public conversation, even as a policy matter, on what are our expectations for charges to Wakefield youth organizations? That part and parcel of why we, why the pitch that we made to the Wakefield community for things like the Galvin, for things like the new fields, aren't to go out and now charge high rates to use those fields for Wakefield groups. That simply gets passed along to Wakefield parents who now get increased basketball fees or increased hockey, well, not hockey, but increased lacrosse fees. So that's the conversation that I would like us to have publicly, not so much this one.
Okay.
But I'm all in. This is fine.
Just as a point of clarity, the fields are not ours.
No, I appreciate that. No, no, it wasn't, it was my larger point. But we can certainly contribute to the conversation around that by talking about the inside of the buildings around. I get all that.
But even that fact, the fact that a lot of people maybe don't know that is something that, you know.
And I did read in the minutes from the budget subcommittee meeting, which I think needs to be our, know, right? I did read in the minutes, the cost of lighting the fields becomes our responsibility. So there's lots around that that needs to be grappled, the least of which is what is the cost per hour for a non-Wakefield for-profit group. But, great, I'm all in. But that conversation is not, is not nearly over.
Right, absolutely. Okay, thanks. Other thoughts, questions on the new rate structure? Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, back to you, Tom, labor relations.
Okay, well, this will be very brief. We are at a really, really good point. Pleased to report that we have tentative agreements with all collective bargaining groups. The most recent to, most recent to land, I guess, were units B and C last week and the week prior. So we're putting together the final actual documents around tentative agreements. We'll be sharing that with the committee in the coming days and its labor relations subcommittee's recommendation, and we'll be prepared to vote on those at our next meeting.
All right. Two weeks from tonight?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for all your hard work and you as well in labor relations. Subcommittee, policy?
Nothing from me.
Nothing from you. Okay, thank you, Rob. And just one final note on subcommittees is assuming we're able to conclude the negotiations, then we can move ahead with the reorganization of the subcommittee, so that's my task. Okay. Future dates and agenda items, I mentioned earlier the Saturday retreat, looking forward to that. Our next full school committee meeting is two weeks from tonight, September 27. And I guess that's it. School committee comments?
No, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, excuse me.
May I, under future agenda items?
Yeah.
I'd like to follow up on a comment that was made by Mr. McKenna.
Oh, right.
Earlier tonight.
Okay.
And I would like us to reconsider the vote that we previously took, or reconsider the matter, not necessarily tonight, because I think we need to be properly engaged and put that properly on the agenda. But I'd very much like to see us to reconsider that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other thoughts on that tonight? Okay, thank you, Tom. All right, school committee comments, we'll start over to my left with RJ.
Just want to welcome back the students and faculty, wish them well this year, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Rob?
All set.
All set.
Happy Arts Education Week. Too bad we didn't have a proclamation of some kind we couldn't stood behind, but thank you for bringing that to our attentions.
Chris?
Hard to believe we're already in marching band season.
Speaking of arts education.
Yeah.
Do not, that's it.
Just want the committee to be aware and the public to be aware the marching band is hosting two shows again this year. The first show is going to be on October 8, which is the NESBA competition, which has become very big. You know, Wakefield has become so well-known for running a very organized and doing a really good job on our shows that at this point, they've had to shut us off. They're not allowing any more bands to sign up because we've gone from an original start time of like 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock, they've had to back it up to 3:00 to accommodate all the bands that have wanted to come. So that's our kudos to the Wakefield Music Boosters for doing such a good job, they attract a very high-quality act crowd. And then the following weekend, on the 15th, is the MICA competition, which is something Wakefield's hosted for, gosh, 20 years.
It's been a long time.
It's a little bit smaller of a show, but again, it's continuing a great tradition. The marching band's show this year is called Immortal. It's of a vampire theme, so it should be very fun to watch.
Did I read that they're also doing a fundraiser for the Interfaith Food Pantry this weekend?
Yeah, which they do every year.
Okay.
They're doing a food drive.
It's a great thing, yeah.
They compete between the various sections of the band to see which section can bring the most food. And the winning section, I believe, has a Saturday morning breakfast with Mr. Bankett is what they did in the past. I don't know if they're still, are they still doing that, as far as you know?
I don't know.
That's what they did in the past, anyway. And the marching band this year, I believe, is like 122. It's gotten to be very big.
Excellent. All right, thank you, Chris. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of September 13, 2016.
Second.